I can see we have a quorum here. You have before you the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Second. All in favor, please show with a show of hands. Okay. As has been my custom, just for a second, to talk about some of the good things happening in the Montgomery County Schools, I'd like to just give a couple of little high-hos. Congratulations to Highland Avenue, Peter Crump, Garrett and Cotoma Elementary Schools for being recipients of the Mary L. and Eugene C. Van Reading Fund Grants sponsored by the Central Alabama Community Foundation. The total of those grants was $10,867. We want to give a congratulations to Jeff Davis High and its brand-new J.D. Engineers Program, which placed third in its first-ever Tech Montgomery Raspberry Pi Competition. The Raspberry Pi Competition is a computer programming contest that Tech Montgomery holds each year, and that each year includes seven River Region schools. Congrats also to Brew Tech. They were competing for the second time this year and came in second place. We have a thank-you to Jora Credit Management Company, donated $500 to Chisholm Elementary School this past few weeks. And yesterday, I was reading in al.com that there's some standout schools, there was a listing of standout schools in the state. We had two number ones. Lamp High School was the number-one high school in the state, and Forest Avenue was the number-one elementary school.[135.22][135.22](APPLAUSE). So BTW was ranked fifth, Brew Tech ninth in the state's high school, Baldwin Arts was ranked third, and Floyd Middle Magnet fourth in middle schools. Bear Exploration Center came in fifth, and Macmillan International came in eighth among elementary schools. And if I recall correctly, there were 15 schools, I think, per category. So eight out of that's very good. We're very proud of them. So, there's more good news, but that's, I'm not gonna, I'll save some for next time. So we have, first, to receive as information, Alabama Power and Ms. Lauren Harris.
I want to preface it real quick. Again, you know, we had the LED Solutions come in a while back and present with a plan. We've had other groups come forward, Alabama Power being one of those. I think you're going to see tonight some of the differences between LED Solutions and Alabama Power. Again, this is for information. Also entailed with this is an HBAC plan. In the future, we're going to be compiling the rest of the people that are bringing information, and I'll put that in one small presentation for you guys at a later date, probably sometime in late February, early March with the rest of those that are coming forward with a different plan. So we're trying to get the PowerPoint presented, but I'll turn it over to Lauren here, and they're pretty here with Alabama Power, so head back this way.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Should I expect the presentation to come up on the screen here?
Yes, ma'am, we're going to get it.
Well, and when I need to cue a slide, how should I cue a slide change?
(INAUDIBLE).
Okay. All right. Hello, my name's Lauren. I'm with Alabama Power Company. I'm a subscription manager, here to chat through an opportunity for Alabama Public Schools to access a new subscription offering that we have that will allow you to upgrade to new needed technology in your schools. Specific tonight is an overview of lighting offering, as well as a preliminary HVAC offering at three schools. I encourage you to stop me at any point if you do have questions, and I'll pause to take any questions as well. So as Alabama Power Company, we've been delivering power to Alabama broadly for over 100 years, specifically to Montgomery Public Schools in the '30s, starting with Sidney Lumiere High School. We're very proud to be partnered and committed to you guys. We want to talk to you about the technology subscription as another way to continue to seamlessly access energy and building infrastructure needs through your Alabama Power bill. Essentially, we will buy and manage new technology for you. We will guarantee all the outcomes. It's applicable to multiple technologies, and essentially taking this off of your plate, your management staff's plate. We've been doing this for 100 years. We'll be around for the next 100. Our subscription program is designed to address deferred maintenance issues. It's designed to give you immediate access to needed, energy-efficient technology in the schools, and offer robust, holistic, long-term guarantees around that. In essence, by doing a subscription, you are purchasing the outcomes of energy infrastructure instead of light bulbs and rooftop units to serve heating and cooling needs and lighting. It would be a subscription to lighting, to brightness, a subscription to heating and cooling, with that functionality of the equipment guaranteed over a seven-to-10-year period. This is applicable for lighting and HVAC, as we'll go into, but also for generators, boilers, even electric vehicles, charging stations, refrigeration, a lot of different things. So it gives you a flexible tool to access this. It's designed as a service contract. Did we have a question, Liz?
Yep. With the zero capital outlay, you're saying that we don't take on any debt or anything like that. Alabama Power Company is going to do that. So you guarantee the services. All this will be paid on our power bill. All of this is included with the services, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, now, all equipment is guaranteed by you, and if there's a problem with it, you all, you all will eat that. We don't have to take care of that.
That's correct.
Okay, and then your contracts, you're saying that they are typically five to 10 years. So that's how you make up the money for what you're doing, by spreading it out like that?
Yes. So for lighting in particular, you'll see we have a 10-year contract offer. The payment is capped, so it is never to exceed a certain value. It's going to be fixed for 10 years. The only reason that it would ever change is it would go down if you're not getting the lighting outcomes that we guarantee in the contract. So if you came into this room and the lights, if only half the lights worked, you would only pay half the bill for that month. You will never pay more than what our contract stipulates, so it remains fixed and predictable for that 10-year term.
So we don't have to have any upfront money for any of this equipment, and you all, Alabama Power, will do that, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. In fact, you'll have everything installed, and your maintenance staff will guarantee, will sign a certificative completion, basically saying, yes, this is done to our satisfaction. We can look around and see that the lights have been completed. Once that is signed, on your next billing cycle, you'll have a line item that says Alabama Power Technology Subscription. So that will be the first time you make a payment, is actually at least 30 days after installation completion.
Okay, now, your interim options, we could terminate or transfer, as long as it was interim, and after that, we can extend our council at the end of this five to 10 years, depending on what we take.
Sure. Yes, that's true. Interim, you can cancel at any time. There is a predetermined cancellation value in the contract, so it's not, you'll know exactly what that is anywhere between month one and month 120. Also, you can pay down the subscription at any point. So if you do somehow come into some grant money that is usable for technology, and you've already done this, and you wish you could have had some down payment initially to bring the monthly payment down even more, you can, you can basically buy the monthly payment down at any point in the contract as well. So it's really flexible. At the end of term, you can extend and continue on with the existing technology.
Okay.
Yeah, now, 10 years, you might have new technology that's going to offer even more savings, so we could look to upgrade at that point, cancel and start over. Or you can cancel and say, we're done, didn't work out, we didn't like it, and you will take ownership of the equipment, and it will, the title will essentially transfer to you at no cost exchange. Now, then you go back to owning it and maintaining it, and all the hassles you're having now, it's changing light bulbs all the time, you're taking that on again, but it is an option for you.
Chad, wait a minute. Chad, our synergy contract is up now, so this would, the synergy, the contract that we had earlier, so this would pick up where they left off.
Synergy?
The energy contract that we had.
You're talking about the preventative maintenance?
Right, right.
That is, that's a little bit different idea, but we are going into that next phase of it. But again, if you're replacing all the equipment, you know, there's less preventative maintenance for those things, and they do the preventative maintenance, not us, and that's one of the benefits of going with something like this and doing this.
Yeah, because when we entered into that contract, you know, that was some of the things that we were concerned about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's been very good to us, and if we can keep up with things, and the work orders are getting less, and we've been able to replace a lot along the way, but on the scale that we're talking about, it's so huge and so big that, I mean, we can't keep up.
Right.
And they may even utilize a train to help do that maintenance. I don't know exactly what they will do in that respect of things, but it's something that we'll have new equipment that will be less, we'll have less to maintain over that 10-year period. And then if anything underperforms, like if the air can...
They are guaranteed.
They take up that part of it, the lights, like what you gave me, the lights.
Since it's our technology and we guarantee that it works as it's designed to work, that means that we're coming in regularly, quarterly at a minimum, to do all preventative maintenance. The longer this lasts and the better it works for you, the more advantageous it is for both parties. It really is a mutually beneficial relationship. So yes, with HVAC, we will take over all preventative maintenance now. We would utilize local vendors, and so who you have right now, if that's who you're pleased with and you want to continue working with them, we can roll their contract into ours, essentially, but we would then manage them and be responsible for work orders. On lighting, we guarantee that all functional units work, and that there's a maximum power draw on HVAC. We guarantee set point deviation, so if you set it to 70 degrees, if it's above 70 for a certain period of time, it's out of the guarantee. We monitor the HVAC systems remotely as well, so we actually know exactly what it's set at, and what it's performing at, and we can set controls on your behalf, so that it comes on and off, and it optimizes for usage. Our guarantee, so our guarantee also, one of the benefits of a functional guarantee, as opposed to other types of guarantee, that guarantees that may be tied to savings, if the equipment is working, if it's a lower-efficiency HVAC unit, if it's a lower wattage LED, it's going to save you money just by simple math.
Right.
So we guarantee that it works as you want, and what that does, it allows you to retain 100% of the savings you get from it. It allows you to retain control, so if you want to, you use your buildings however you want. If you want to turn lights on more so, because camp is using the building in the summertime, but they didn't last summer, you're not penalized for using more than you are currently using, no baselining. So you retain full control. We can also design these systems with more optimization in mind. Rather than predictable savings, we can make it so, like with lighting, we add smart controls in, so the lights are on when you're in the room and need them, otherwise they're not, as opposed to a set schedule. And it allows you to retain the flexibility and apply this model to any equipment. Sometimes, major infrastructure upgrades don't come with savings. If you wanted to install electric vehicle charging stations, that's actually an added electricity cost to you, but it gives you access to things that, or any building infrastructure that you need. Luckily with lighting, and I'll get into this in a moment, luckily with the lighting proposal, there's significant savings involved with it. So a little bit of background and context on how it arrived today. We wanted to select a representative sample, so to go through a few schools and do a thorough lighting audit and a thorough mechanical audit, but we wanted to pick a few to see what would, how could this represent the broader portfolio. So we've looked at Lee High School, Brubaker Junior High School, and Davis Elementary. Due to the nature of lighting audits, we're able to offer this final lighting proposal. This is something we could go to contract with immediately on the lighting end. On the HVAC end, there's a little bit more to be done. There needs to be some engineering work and some final scope and pricing work. So the HVAC that I'm talking to you today about is preliminary, to make that distinction.
One thing about HVAC, too, you know, the engineers have to sign all that commission and those kind of things, that's why it's just kind of a rush overview of the HVAC.
And Alabama Power will have to come in and approve it anyway, so might as well let them do it all.[898.49][898.49](LAUGHING).
Streamlining, Chad.
(LAUGHING).
Our lighting solution is mostly fixture upgrades, so complete replacement of the fixture. Most of the fixtures in the schools that we audited were really near the end of their useful life, so going in and putting in a new lamp, putting in an LED lamp is not necessarily the longest-term solution for you. Also, fixture upgrades will address aesthetics, so there were cracked lenses that we saw, there was like discoloration in areas, just inconsistent lighting levels. A full upgrade will really guarantee that you're getting the aesthetics. You're also maximizing energy savings with a full replacement, as opposed to just a relamp. Additionally, this includes all exterior lighting to enhance safety and security, and smart controls, so wall-mounted sensors, so that you are not using lights when you don't need to, and therefore, all of those extra savings you get go straight to you. This is a summary of the three schools in the larger packet that was provided to you before. There's breakdowns and details on each one, but as a summary here, you can see that of, currently, with maintaining this system and paying the energy associated with your current lighting system, you're paying about $220,000 per year in electricity at these three schools. With this solution, you're immediately going to, that's going to drop down to $44,600. That's your energy bill from us, and the extra line item from us on the subscription payments is another $162, so you have an immediate net savings of over $14,000 per year with no capital outlay.
And that's per year, the 14,000?
This is annual, yes. And because these subscription payments remain fixed, they would never increase. All right, so just a quick overview with the lighting subscription, what you get upfront over the term and at the end of term, you would get the highest-quality lighting solution possible immediately, control systems to maximize energy savings, all that energy savings is yours. You pay nothing until the installation is complete. On your next or even the following Alabama Power bill, you've got your line item for your subscription payment. Over the term, all repairs, all maintenance done by us. This is going to include six-month walkthroughs. That means we're going to go to these schools every six months, make sure everything looks good. That way, Mr. McKenzie does not have to call us to say, hey, we've got a light out. The teachers don't have to call Mr. McKenzie to then call us and say, hey, we've got a light out. Obviously, if there's something that happens in between, we're here, we have a 24/7 subscriber services line that you can call in and report any issues to us, but the proactive mechanism to address lighting would be to just go into every school every six months, do that walkthrough, ensure everything's working, fix it if it's not. You pay every month on your bill, and you could cancel at any time or pay down the subscription end-of-term extension or cancellation, which would yield a title transfer to you. I'll breeze through this, but this is the final proposal part, this is final pricing. We can go to contract at any point. There's a master contract between Alabama Power, Montgomery Public Schools, that will be a one-time master contract. Each school or each technology would be under its own project addendum, so it does cut down on, if we scale this to multiple schools, to multiple technologies, it cuts down on some legal review, because it's essentially the same contract each year. That will specify what the monthly payment for that school and that account number would be. So I'm going to shift over to HVAC. Does anybody have any lighting-specific questions about the lighting subscription solution?
Do you do this for residential, because that would really help me change my job.[1140.16][1140.16](LAUGHING).
We've explored it, but not yet. It's a new offering as of 2019, so, not, I know it's 2020, but it's a new offering from last year.
What is the manufacturer warranty?
Manufacturer warranty is 10 years, but even if it were, even if it were five years, it's that technological risk and the fact that it's working is totaling on us. So we'll service the warranty. We choose higher quality equipment, tier one, and we choose the longer warranty service as part of this.
And we've, I mean, your copy that you've given us is this, this is all the numbers and stuff, is this right here?
Yes, you, I think you have the large version of it.
Right. Is there any way, Chad, that we can get some kind of paradigm where we, you know, compare? Because I know, I studied Mr. Jones's LED lights, which was, which was savings, and it's almost the same. In some areas, I noticed they were a little bit less, and other areas, it just kind of fluctuates, and it'd be kind of nice to look at a chart, a comparison of both of them when we make that decision.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I plan to do. When I get the rest of those groups that are coming in, there's three or four more groups that are presenting to me directly, I'm going to compile all those, and I'm going to have our maintenance people in different areas that deal with that, look at those proposals as well, ask the questions that they have, put it all together, and then do exactly what you're saying, put it side by side, so you get a clear vision of what it is we're looking at and make the best choice.
And good, good point, Lisa, and I think that's important. I also think it's important, I know I get sidetracked, but I think it's important, too, when we come to that decision, that it's not just about what is, you know, this light bulb is $10 and this one is $8.50, that the partnership with Alabama Power with the school system for all these years, and they are local, and they are our friends, and, you know, they're taking care of everything. When I remember the last presentation, the only other one we've had, they're not local, and they're just a lighting company. And so I think that we'll have those discussions, but I think for this meeting, I think it's important that we recognize that, that this is, you know, this is like the mother lode is Alabama Power, and we know they stand behind it.
LED Solutions is local to Alabama.
Right, yeah, I know it's local to Alabama.
They're in this area, and that's one of my biggest things, because I had a group last year out of Atlanta that, you know, that just kind of breezed in, and I didn't, after I kind of heard their little pitch, I didn't even entertain it, because I couldn't get my hands on them, if something was wrong.
Right, and I think that's what we need, but I thought that that company was out of Pelham.
They are.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. But they have local people.
I understand, I understand.
They are local.
Well, I mean, their office is in Pelham, is what I'm saying. I get it, their home office.
I'm going to make sure that whoever that I put in front of you guys is somebody that's in the state of Alabama, that we can put our hands on and do those things, and then, of course, we're going to have to get the blessing from finance as well, because he's going to tell us what we can and can't do.
Right.
You know, I know y'all will make the best decision from the school district.
Sure.
Additionally, I don't remember exactly which walkthroughs we had. Are we looking at the same institutions each time when we get these comparisons?
Some groups, LED Solutions did the entire school system, and that's why theirs took so long, they really thoroughly went through it.
And they have a Montgomery office.
Correct. And, you know, Alabama Power wanted to get something to us very quickly, so we tried to scale it down, and the rest of the groups are doing the same thing. Most of them, the rest of the groups are utilizing these same three schools, so we get an accurate comparison, and that's the way I kind of set them up. But I could, I'll have LED Solutions for these three schools side by side, and I will get all the information together on those things, so that y'all can see it all together.
So to apply the same subscription offering to mechanical, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit different, because mechanical is a little bit different, because it requires a lot more preventative maintenance, you know, remote controls, wrong word, but controlling the system remotely, having constant insights to it, are some added benefits that you get with mechanical subscription. But it would sit under the same master contract, it would be with Alabama Power Company, and we would also be talking likely about a 10-year contract here. So not only are we local, certainly within walking distance, we will be here for 10 years. We're not going anywhere. That contract is good. You can, you can hang your hat on it for sure. So with the, what we're proposing on a preliminary basis, and only because we have not gone through the full engineering study and permitting and everything we really need to do to get final numbers out here, we want to talk to you about the next steps in order to get an HVAC subscription in place. What we are proposing to do is invest a lot of money, several million, it's upwards of, you know, higher than $6 million roughly, for new mechanical systems across these three schools, install remote monitoring and controls, so that we can proactively maintain the systems. And before your team knows that a heating and cooling system is not working one morning, before the kids come to school, we will know that, and we will be fixing it, we will be working on that. We have guaranteed turnaround times, guaranteed set point deviation, and guarantee wattage drop for all of these systems. All of that risk comes on to us. We guarantee performance over the term, giving you that same fixed monthly payment for each school. So this is, this is, when we went through the schools, we saw some stuff that was, you know, certainly of concern. There's no question that these systems need to be upgraded desperately. We saw boiler with, we saw a lot of efficiency gains as well. It appeared like general maintenance had just had not been done in some time, and so we do really look forward to the opportunity to dive in here more so, and understand the best opportunity to get these kids better mechanical conditions in their schools. Both Lee High and Davis Elementary, our proposed solution would be to remove window units and go with a variable refrigerant flow system with a dedicated outside air. This is going to achieve things like fresh air in spaces, which is really important, bring everything up to code compliance, have individual space temperature control, which is great for teachers who might want it warmer, teachers who might want it cooler, and also just maximizing energy efficiency when you're not using a certain area, it can be controlled differently than the room next to it. It will give you more efficiency from a cooling perspective as well. At Brubaker High School, the solution is to replace the chillers, all air handling units, and add a control system on that piece of equipment. It's going to have the same sort of benefits. The main difference here with, with what you get with HVAC as opposed to lighting is just a quarterly preventative maintenance plan, so that does mean that we can either fold in your current contract, or we can bring in a different preventative maintenance group, but that is going to be included in that one line item on your APC bill, is all maintenance, all repairs, even replacements, if the system for some reason needs to be replaced or doesn't work. We're also monitoring these remotely, so continually optimizing them. We basically have eyes on these systems and how they're performing at all times, and that way, that way we can proactively maintain and get in front of issues that do call, the idea that you would have to shut a school down because a system hadn't been maintained would be, we would foresee that way so, way more so in the future by monitoring it regularly. This is, this is a sample financial scenario for a project that we've proposed to another Alabama school district. So this is just to serve as an expectation in your mind of a comparison of what it would cost to do this outside of subscription, or the status quo of, you know, hiring the engineering firm, going to bid, paying a vendor to install it, and then having ongoing preventative maintenance and repairs out of pocket. So comparing over 10 years of, or this is a seven-year proposal, comparing over seven years what that looks like doing it out of pocket versus on your APC bill, it shows a proposed 30% cost reduction. When you take those two numbers, your cost over seven years and the predictable fixed monthly payment cost is actually 30% less. This one's for, actually a smaller amount, too, for about $1.6 million of infrastructure upgrades, where we're talking, you know, six to 10. The next step with the HVAC, because there needs to be more work done, what we are proposing to you, and what we'd like to be able to do, is to go ahead and commence engineering studies, so we can get those folks on the ground, we can get their expertise, we can come back with final drawings, final scope, and final pricing. That does require us to implement a lot of resources, so what we ask is a professional development agreement between our two organizations, and we can, we can get started with that and come back with those deliverables. If you guys choose that subscription's not the route that you want to take for HVAC, we just ask to be compensated back on, for the costs, which we've outlined the proposed costs here, the estimated costs here for those engineering studies. So you can also have access to engineering studies at no cost to you that can inform us if you move forward with subscription through Alabama Power, those costs, you don't have those costs. So you don't have to front the money. If you choose not to move forward with it, you just ask for reimbursement, that's all.
I saw somewhere in my reading, and I don't know where it was, it was something about 70 to 90 days, what was that in reference to? Somewhere in this document that you gave, it was something about 70 to 90 days or something. Somewhere in this document that you gave, it was something about 70 to 90 days or something.
That would be to go through the engineering study, the formal engineering study by right now.
I don't know. It's in, it's in this packet.
The install on the lighting would be in that timeframe as well. But so would the engineering study, to be honest, we're looking at about 90 days.
Okay, I just saw it in here and I didn't know what it had reference to and I intended to ask.
Yeah, and if you have a question of how long would these installations take for the lighting side, it would be about 90 days.
Let me ask you this, if we did find, and when we started comparing that other lighting companies had, you know, a better, better price, would y'all, could y'all handle just the H VAC part of it? The HVAC part of it?
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's not an all or nothing package. It's a, you can choose lighting, you could choose HVAC, you could choose all the technologies. We, like with HVAC, I mean, Alabama Power, it's, it's not, we, we contract with local partners. We have a national network actually to go even outside of Alabama because our southern company parent also has this program. But we have local vendors that we utilize to do these installations. They're vetted and qualified through us. If there's a preferred vendor, then we can also work with that as long as they're qualified and they meet our standards. I mean, we do require quality solutions, not just relamps. So there are certain qual, there are certain aspects of our solution that need to meet a certain standard and we think that's mutually beneficial. But if that, if you have another solution or another vendor, that's something that we can explore wrapping under subscription. Again, as long as it meets our standards.
And you also say in here somewhere about things that, that's reusable, that you all would do retrofitting.
Yes, so in areas where the housing is still in good condition, we would retrofit. And in, in some limited instances, like less than 10%, a relamp is actually, it actually is okay because the fixture is newer and it's in really good condition. So we can, we look at it and say, that's fine. In this case, the most cost-effective thing to do is actually do a relamp. It's just not our broad solution. Yeah, we, we really used a keen eye and went to a detailed level on these audits to make sure it's the blend of what, what's needed. If we did go to a school and everything was, the fixtures were pretty much brand new, but there was a desire to switch to LEDs for efficiency opportunity and savings, it might be a relamp solution there. So we would go in with what makes the most sense. And these three schools, the vast majority were placements.
Sorry, I had to make sure the mic was on. For, what other districts do you work with that, where they utilize the lighting as well as the HVAC in the state?
So right now, we don't have any other schools under subscription through Alabama Power. It's a newer offering. We have several proposals that are at this very stage or even later stage that are likely to be implemented. However, we don't have anyone that's currently paying on their Alabama Power bill yet. Again, it's a newer product. With our, the lighting vendor that we've, we've talked about doing this, that, that we brought in to do the audits and we intend to use for, for the implementation. They've done over 100 school districts, districts across eight states here in the southeast totaling over $150 million in project value. And Alabama Power, as a company, we have invested $100 million in technology and infrastructure upgrades across the state, including lighting and mechanical and HVAC and stuff. So there's a lot of cities, there's a lot of school districts in Alabama currently looking at this. It just, as you know, takes time to go through the options and then get things started.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. So the first question is, do you anticipate that the savings on your efficiencies will pay for the subscription?
They do on a portfolio basis, yes.
What do you mean by that?
So if you look at every single school, I can't say and guarantee that every single school will, the, the subscription payment will cover, I'm sorry, the savings will cover the payment. Because it really depends on when we get in there and we audit, it depends on what condition is the school in and what energy savings opportunities are there. What, what is the solution that the school needs to implement? Is it a higher cost solution or is it a lower cost solution? What are the burn hours? How is the school being utilized? What are the savings opportunities there?
But system, what about system-wide? If you had several, several tools, would you anticipate, unless there are some glitches, that the efficiencies would conserve enough money for us to pay for the subscriptions?
I do anticipate that broadly, yes. Now, one thing we can do is if you, if it is a requirement that every single school has a standalone building must meet a certain threshold of savings or cash flow positivity, if you will. We can go and isolate and we can start with those. You know, not every school maybe needs a lighting upgrade. I haven't been to all of them, but I would imagine that some of them are newer and some of them might be in better condition. And those would be the ones that you put at the bottom of the list. And we get to those, you know, when it can be more of a cost-effective implementation. This, again, this is not an all or nothing. We don't have to do this at 53 schools. We can do this at the 35 that it, that makes 100% sense for. But eventually, all of your schools will need a lighting upgrade. And we do think this is the most cost-effective and highest quality way to do it.
Okay, and so my second question is based on your, your last paragraph there if, about the engineering study. And that if the system chooses not to use Alabama Power, then they would have to reimburse for that cost, estimated cost for those, say, three schools if we choose not to use Alabama Power. We would have to pay you for the engineering study.
Essentially, that's what we will have invested. Now, you will own the results of that engineering study. So it will be very valuable information for you to have. Because then you, if you say, you know what, we're not going to go the subscription route, we want to pay cash for this, we're going to use our own capital, you can take that and you can go give it to somebody who can then implement and design it. You will own those just as if you had commissioned the engineers yourself to do that study.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we, we're going to see all of the other figures anyway first. So we wouldn't be in that position because we will have made a decision to do a not to do before they do anything.
Yes. Any, any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. You're part of that presentation.
Make sure you, you ask those questions to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. And if you don't, you know, you can get a number, we all know we can get numbers the same way. I appreciate what Ms. Bailey said about, you know, Alabama Power, we are partners with school system. We have an account manager that's assigned to the school system, to 53 campuses, hundred buildings. You know, Chris Harrison, his folks have any issue, they call us, we're a partner here. And we're just 24/7 a partner in schools. So, again, I just appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to, to speak to you. I will say the genesis of us being here was a newspaper article that was read back in August talking about a school system that had to close because I think the air conditioning was out. We had to let the school out. And at that time, I called, I was with Will and Jan and I, we really wanted to put something together to help the school system. We live here, this is our community.
Thank you.
Could you introduce your folks here? Yeah.
Arvind Carter, Alabama Power in Birmingham. I'm in at the technical description of Robust State. Nick Matthews, an engineer for designing and auditing. And Brandon Harper, your local account manager.
And Keith, Keith Karst, who if we ever need something in the middle of the night, I do have his cell phone number. Thank you, we appreciate it very much. All right, Mr. Dunson.
Okay, Mr. Dunson's out. And, you know, so I'm going to just bring this up.
Okay, Dr. Moore.
Okay, excuse me. So Mr. Dunson had a little medical emergency. And so basically, there's, in connection with the right-of-way, which we talked about, about in front of Lee High School, which was approved in 2013, there's a little strip of land as part of that right-of-way near Capitol Heights. And so this little strip is something that the city and the state want to acquire as a right-of-way so that they can do that expansion at some point, probably a year or so from now on the right-of-way that goes along with the Ann Street extension. So that's basically what this is about. That small little chunk over at Capitol Heights.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, then.
Just to tell you that it's already, that was the Capitol Heights one. Okay, so briefly, again, the Ann Street piece also has to do with the right-of-way. I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight because you've already voted on it. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention as an FYI that this is also a part of this right-of-way extension of adding some different, I guess you'd call it lanes or widening the Ann Street property.
Okay. Ms. Hatch. Life Academy Charter School application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to update you about the status of the application. If you remember, we, as authorizers, we released a RFP for charter schools. We released one for conversion that had a quick turnaround time. And then we also released one for startup schools that was due on November 30th. And on November 30th, we received an application from Life Academy, which you have had and you've reviewed. We also on January 8th did a capacity interview with it, with their team. And then on January 9th, we had a public forum for the, for this, the proposed application. At this time, I just wanted to see if you had any questions or if you needed any clarification on anything on the application.
Thanks for giving us a good quiet to read it.
It was a lot to read.
It was, and in comparison to the last one.
There's no comparison.
A couple of questions. And it really did seem like a, a nice program, I will say that. But my question was, and because I know we do, we did the RFP, I wanted to know, just by reading the application, it didn't seem at that time in my reading that I saw a notice anything different than what we do inside of our schools. And I know that the whole purpose of charter schools is to find things that kind of, where we may need a little assistance. So I was just wondering, what made this stand, what makes this one a little bit different than what we're doing?
Well, the way that they're going to, that what their application stated is they will focus on students with, who have experienced emotional crisis and their teachers would all be trained in helping to support students. Which the way that our team read it, that's good support for any student, whether they had a crisis or not. But then more support for those students who had. So that's really their focus on extra support for students as well as you've read their academic program as well. But that's, that's, I, I would say they felt, set them even further ahead of what we're currently doing. They would be able to provide some additional support.
So you said that puts them ahead of what we're doing. Is, what's the reason that we are behind in doing it then?
Well, the way that their, their proposal, and of course, everything is dependent on their funding and their flexibility that they would get as a charter school. That, so they would be able to spend their money differently than we can spend it. They can staff a little bit differently than we can, which is the nature of the charter.
And forgive me for being, asking all these questions, but, and being redundant. But how so? I know when I went and I looked at the student support and then counselors in the classroom, I was just trying to really, literally find just some barriers, some things that they did that we didn't do. I did actually like the social and emotional program. I mean, I was like, you know, that seems fantastic. And then I went into and dug into a little bit of our information and said, well then, you know, we provide this even when we don't know we're providing it, you know, we're doing it. So, and on the trauma, traumatic, trauma end of it, I was also curious as to, is that something, area for MPS where we're just not having the manpower to do it? Or like, what is the deal? And if it's not the manpower, have we made a, made it a priority to put fund in there to get it where we need to go? I just really honestly wanted to know, you know, what is it that we're not doing that would make us have to get support like this? And that's literally, because I, I can't say I had many likes with it.
Okay, those are really good questions. Let me say that first off. And I have to reflect on what the law says, that when you have underperforming schools, then the charter application becomes an alternative. And so if we are to, if we ever get to a point where we don't have underperforming schools and the, the applications and those kinds of things, we will really not have to do a lot of work to address. Right now, the law just simply says underperforming, disadvantaged, whatever. And so we do offer many of the services, but we have 27,000 students. We are underfunded, we talk about that all the time with 10 meals. So we're underfunded. We don't have the flexibility to use the funds the way a private or charter school might use their funds. All of our, we have line items for how we use our money, transportation, food service, et cetera, et cetera. And we can't skip it about and use it any other way other than the way it's designated. So the, the funding piece is a big issue when you have as many students as we have and not having the flexibility that, that is written into the charter law in public schools. We just don't have that. Unfortunately, I did used to say, give me the same flexibility that you give charter schools and maybe I can do things a little differently, but that's not the case yet with public schools. And so we just don't have that flexibility to do some of those things.
Right.
Or the funding.
And I read like the ESSA law, Every Students to See Act. And inside of that act, it does provide for flexibility and federal funds to go towards at-risk youth and things that they mentioned in there. Now, I don't know per se how much by dollars we, we get or percentage we get. But I do know that it exists. I know that we get, we receive at-risk funding that also caters to those needs as well. So that's why I asked, is it just us not putting, making it a priority and putting that sufficient funding there to get the people? Because honestly, at this time, I was like, well, if we get the money, and I'm looking at ESSA and I'm looking at the at-risk funds, then it seems just on paper that we can do a lot of the things that they're doing. And in fact, we're doing a lot of things like, I noticed in the application, excuse me, I have a cold and it's trying to win. But I saw RTI with dealing with behavior. Well, that's something that we utilize in our schools. I noticed that they also talked about professional development and training the teachers. And I know since, thank you so much, since I've, oh, thank you. Since I've been, I, I've heard, since I've been on the board numerous times, different board members wanted to emphasize, you know, professional development geared towards that, in that direction. And so I was just, you know, this one was tough. I'm going to say this was a really good application, it really was. And I could see so much potential, but I, they don't know. And I could see so much potential, but they don't know me, y'all know me, but I am the reader. We all read, but I just kind of dig a little deeper sometimes, probably too deep.
Thank you.
Y'all are readers, so I'm not alone. But I'm just the one that I always go a little bit deeper because I'm just curious like that. The only thing that I was concerned about with, in addition to, you know, us doing it versus you all, the organization of doing it, was looking at what the charter school law required. And one of the things that kind of made me just uncomfortable was that it was specifically targeted towards African-American and Latino students. And so, I'm one of those people, I went back to history, Brown versus Board of Education, honestly, because that just kind of went like, wait, that sounds like, you know, separate and equal. And when I dug in the law, I noticed that that just kind of was on the, right on the cusp of sounding like separate and equal. And that, and the whole point of, and the point, I guess, for charter schools, if I'm not mistaken, is to also further integrate. And I know you're not closing it off to anybody, but just that verbiage, for me, was a little bit uncomfortable because I'm very particular about children having labels placed upon them. You know, when we're talking about African-American and Latino students, trauma, I think any child can experience trauma. When we talk about social and emotional education, that's not a black or Latino thing. That's such, that can be any child of any ethnicity situation. So, that was, that part was pretty much the only comfortable part. But I will say, I also visited Second Chance just to get an idea. I really wanted to see, like, how are we helping our children in instances where there's trauma or being put out of school or whatever? And believe me, I am a social advocate through and through, and I'm not ashamed about it. But what are we doing to help build our students up? And I visited some schools and I will say, I'm pretty encouraged on some things that I just see us doing. And that's just my observation. Yes, we can do more and I looked at this and I said, and I can even see where they can do more. But I was just, I'm just still going to remain optimistic with MPS and seeing that the direction that we're headed and hearing from organizations that we partner with, how they've come in and helped. And that's the biggest piece for me, the people coming in. And I don't mean to take up too much time, but this was like sitting months inside of me. But the people that have come in, that actually have invested in our students, like in the trenches with us, is what I admire about our partnership with a lot of different organizations. And I promise, I'm done. He won't hear from me anymore.
Well, Erica, just to say, I shared some of the same concerns because I looked at the ZIP codes of 36105, 36107, and 36108. And there are probably some children in those ZIP codes who are white, who have had trauma. And I was concerned about some of the verbiage too, but I think that was that.
I did discuss it with the group and they assured me that they are not eliminating any group of students who live in those ZIP codes based on their ethnicity.
But it's interesting because I had the same, you know, it's like, wait just a minute, you know, let's have inclusiveness in it.
Well, and I just pointed out because even in the application, I can't remember what page, but I know it was towards the beginning, where it's stating specifically for African-American and Latino students. And I said, you know, I just don't think that we should be in the habit of kind of going around Brown versus Board of Education regardless of, because some people will, you can do it and unknowingly do it. And when I read it, I could see how you could, that could go around it, honestly. And so, that was just one of my concerns. And like I said, I still believe in MPS and having talked to some of our partners and knowing that we are, you know, getting their psychiatrists and social workers in there, hopefully restructuring our counseling, how we utilize our counselors. So, I just have a big belief in honestly what we can do. I did my homework just to see, because I really will be honest, I was impressed. And this one was probably the toughest one. And I said, this probably shouldn't have been the first one, you know, over the last ones. But, you know, but that's still my concern. And my other concern, and I said I shouldn't, but I will after this, is when we went to the authorizer. I'm still not sure on authorization. I had Dr. Moore send me the thing, the authorization, and about 16 things were underdeveloped. And so, I know we went into intervention and former interim superintendent, Ed Ritchie.
Richardson.
Richardson, excuse me, had a magic one, it gets out of sight, out of mind now, but had a magic one and made us authorizers. And apparently sent over something and said that we went from pending under Tommy Bison, under his authority, we are no more. And then I heard today that, and this is all coming from the State Department, so they may have to straighten this out. But today I learned that we, they don't know, they think that Richardson sent something over, but we've done two years of RFPs and because of that, we're authorizers. And I'm just one of those people, I just, you know, I'm a stickler to what you say in the book. And if it said pending, then we're pending. And if we don't have a letter showing that we're not pending anymore and the corrections have been made, I just want to be convinced that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do and I'm not doing something that's out of order because, you know, if we're gonna be authorizers, at the very least, we should be able to follow the law.
We can certainly request an official letter stating that we are authorizers.
And so, let me add, and Krista, you can help me if I'm wrong on this, if I'm going off on a tangent. But I think as an authorizer, you actually have more ability to make decisions about what group will become a charter school because you have, under the law, you have more ability to make those decisions, whereas outside of being authorized, somebody else makes it for you. And then, as it stands now, we are able to have some oversight, both with the startup and with the conversion. And so, part of our job would be to make sure the federal laws are followed, which prohibit discrimination from any group, or based on any group, based on their ethnicity. And so, even though that question is there about the ethnic groups, our role becomes under federal law because we now are authorizers, we've been told. We have to make sure that we follow the state and federal laws or else the funding can be cut if it's not utilized correctly. So, you have those protective measures in place because we are authorizers. We get to go in and say hello every once in a while and check things out in all of our charters. We have the ability to do that. We do not have that ability with Lee Academy because we were not an authorizer when they became a charter. So, we don't have that kind of authority. We do have it with the two that are now, the one that has been approved and then the other one that's up for approval.
And to add to that, and it really, when I read this law, it's a catch 22 either way because you cannot be an authorizer and they can go to the state charter commission and have it done that way. You can deny them. They can appeal to the state.
Correct.
And still have it go through, and it still won't, and if that's the route.
And they can go to court beyond that.
Yeah, and beyond that.
And maybe have it approved, so.
It's an interesting law. And I actually bought a copy because I was like, I think we need to familiarize ourselves with it to know what we're getting into.
Well, I will guarantee you that our staff has read it many, many times. I mean, I know you want the board, but I could send them all a copy. But yes, it had some issues in there that are a little bit squirrely. But we've tried to work with the State Department to kind of clarify from our perspective, what exactly some of those things mean. But in our first interaction with it, with the law, it was cold to us also. So, we had to spend a good deal of time reading it and then looking at applications after we read the law. So, we wanted to make sure we knew exactly what the law was saying to us as an authorizer. So, the question about the at-risk money, we use it for a lot of different things. Truancy, behavior issues, and mental health. And we have one of our partners with us tonight that will help tell us some more about our mental health pieces and health pieces that we are going to be doing with, as a school system. But we have to kind of spread our money, the parts that we get, among 26,000, 27,000 kids, whereas someone in a smaller group will not have to spread it out so much. And that's why we try to get as many partners as we can get to work with us because the money becomes very slim. The at-risk money, I think, if I'm not sure, Mr. Watson, it go down a little bit. The at-risk money is not as much as it used to be when we started out years ago with it. So, some of those monies are diminishing, but we still have some of the same issues and some of those issues are escalating. Some of it's just based on the way society is operating nowadays. We have more of those problems than we had in the past.
But one of the things, and this is probably not so much of a cause, well, let me just say this, I learned that AUM offers free professional development. All we have to do is ask. I learned that at the mayor's transition meeting.
I think that's our in-service center. Is it still our in-service center? Oh, AUM? Oh, ASU is our in-service center. Okay.
And they are offering it free. And they've opened, I mean, we can just send information what we like for our teachers to be trained in. I said that to say this, a lot of it for them was not monetary. It was, well, I guess, if it's free, let's say AUM, if that's the focus that we want to go, and they say, look, we'll provide that professional development to your teachers for you and get the proper people, then at no cost to us, we're building capacity in our teachers and staff so that they can handle the similar situations or the same situations and provide the emotional, social-emotional training as well as the trauma, dealing with trauma as well. I just, you know, still, I'm learning that there are a lot of free things out there that I just didn't know about.
But we're getting a little bit off topic now because what we were discussing.
Yeah, no, it's about the application. It's correlating. It's just what they said in the application and just looking at how, you know, my statement is simple. We could do similar things.
To make it relevant. Right, right. I'm not going to belabor the point. I will say that I was excited reading this particular application. Very excited about the trauma-sensitive learning environments. There are many options and opportunities provided in here that are exciting. But I too am concerned about MPS proceeding with great caution. In less than a year since we've been on the board, we've looked at or had to deal with the possibility of three, minimally, three charters coming in. And we want to make certain that we're just not shuffling our kids off to say that we cannot get the job done when how much effort have we had the opportunity to put forth to get the job done? And you clipped my wings when you said, no, the flexibility is not there and it's going to be a long time coming. At some point, we're going to have to demand that if this is what the state wants schools to be able to do, give schools the rights and the opportunity to do what we need to do to get our children where they need to be. Again, I highlighted wonderful points and as Ms. Watkins Smith brought out, a lot of these things are available to our children. We have to make sure that they are being done and that's this body's responsibility. And I'm hoping that as we move forward, that this group of people sitting here will be allowed to get out there, work with the teachers and the students and the schools, and bring our schools to where we want them to be and not just, you know, give them away and say, well, we can't do it, so let's find somebody who can get the job done. I don't think that's what this body ought to be about.
Any other discussion on that? Then we will continue with you with STEM.
Yes. I'll take off my charter hat and put on my STEM hat.
Okay.
MPS has partnered with Cognia, which was once called Advanced Ed, to create a STEM initiative. And the STEM initiative is going to be for two feeder patterns of schools. One is a traditional feeder pattern and the other is a magnet feeder pattern. And the traditional feeder pattern is going to consist of Johnson Elementary, McKee Middle School, and Lanier High School. And then the magnet feeder pattern will be their elementary school, Boyd Middle Magnet School, and Brutek High School. It's basically a two-step process that will hopefully lead to a Cognia STEM certification. So, we have done an evaluation of where we are with STEM in the district. Where we've been doing classroom visits, we did interviews with teachers and administrators in the building. And the best part of it is we did interviews with students to develop where our state of STEM is in Montgomery Public Schools. The teacher introduced us to it and I was interested in it just to see how it would be. So, I decided to try it out. It's been fun. It's been very interesting. It's been very challenging. I've been enjoying myself. It felt so interesting to be able to set it up for the robot to move and do what it's supposed to do.
I was very interested in making robots and working together with other people and going against other teams and competing. My favorite part of it was actually building the actual robot, putting it together. I liked talking to the designers, especially my best friend out of all of my subjects. So, basically my robot, satellite robot, had to go up to judges and present our robot, like, sell it to them. I told them how a lot of people are dying from trying to fix power lines and that our robot could help them so that they don't have to restart lives each and every year. I feel uncomfortable talking to people because I'm shy. And when I'm presenting to the judges, basically, I'm confident that I need to talk.
We want STEM to have about six key elements in it. So, one of the things is we want to have some problem-based learning. And by problem-based learning, the students are looking and making connections between all of the disciplines. The Habitat STEM Charlotte Web project incorporated science, reading, and English. And the students, what they had to do was bring materials from home and create an open-air container that was their goose egg habitat. And they had to take it from home to school each day, take it to each of their classes. And so, it incorporated school, but it also incorporated life skills. And at the end of the week or the end of the project, they had to write a letter to myself, the principal, or their parents and let them know what they learned as part of responsibility is. We're reading the novel Charlotte's Web and that talks about Jennifer Wilbur in the barn, a web for Charlotte's spider, and a goose egg habitat that they created for their precious egg. They learn what to do, what not to do, and they learn some life skills along the way that I hope that they continue to keep throughout their schooling career. What those people think of as STEM, S-T-E-M, science, technology, math, and engineering, while it has a place in it, that's not going to be the focus of what we do. But rather, we want those students learning to solve problems, learning to engage in their learning. The best part of it is the students are learning that failing is okay, that the first time that they try to solve the problem, it's not going to work. But what they do from that is they go back and they learn from what didn't work. But what they do from that is they go back and they learn from what didn't work, and then they redesign their project. So we're already seeing that in a lot of classrooms, and it's very encouraging.
You look like Paul B.
I know.
Yeah.
If you'll open the Word document that's down at the bottom. That'll be, this has come out of some of the work that we've done. Uh-oh, I think the YouTube video is starting over. I reported to you when we initially started this partnership and we had the plans, and you guys have gotten the report from the state of STEM study that we've done. And that's outlined those six schools and where they are and how long we expect it to take to get them fully STEM embedded. Some are already there, some are starting from the ground level. So that outline kind of gives you a good overview of what our expectations are. Since the report, also, we have met with the school leadership teams twice. And in those, the first, we talked about what a STEM culture is, and we talked about what the expectations would be for STEM, a STEM school and a STEM classroom. And then we also met with feeder patterns, with the linear feeder pattern one day and the Brew Tech feeder pattern another day, to look for commonalities and what could we tie all along from elementary to middle to high school to kind of create a STEM brand for those feeder patterns and what can they build on as an entire team. We've also met with our district team twice. The vision and the beliefs are some of the work that's come out of the first session. The second session just happened this past week, and we are working on a strategic plan for the district to implement STEM. The next steps for the project, the schools are, this week, turning in their school-level strategic plan for STEM implementation. And then based on that, the district team will take a look at that, and we are going to look at what kind of targeted professional development we can do for them so that whatever goals they selected based on the STEM standards, we can then provide direct side-by-side coaching for them. And we're also going to take all of them, we're going to find a nearby school, probably in the metro Atlanta area, so that they can visit a school that looks like theirs, that is doing a good job with STEM, so they can see what it looks like in action. So those are some of the next steps. And as you could tell from the report, it's going to be a long process for some and a short process for others. Which brings me to the biggest news that we have is Brew Tech, when we visited the school and the STEM expert visited the school, basically said, "Y'all live this life every day, so why not go ahead and get STEM certified?" So they were planning on inviting a team in in April or May, and after that discussion, they decided to invite the team in in February when the district accreditation occurs. So February 4th and 5th, they will host a STEM certification. We will know on the 5th what the outcome is going to be, and we have really high hopes for that. They are feverishly working, again, they live the life, the STEM life, every day, but then putting it on paper and doing the narratives and putting all your, archiving your documentation is a lot of work, but they're working on that around the clock. Let's see, one last thing for STEM is you will be hearing much more about this, but I just wanted to kind of let a little bit of a cat out of the bag. We have been told that we've received a $70,000 grant, and it's just going to be targeting middle schools. And we will be able to put four Vex robotics kits in every middle school. We will be able to train, yes. We will be able to train two teachers. That training includes a full-day training, two different occasions. They're going to provide the substitute teachers everything for that, for those teachers to learn how to use those robotics kits. A stipend for those teachers to provide out-of-school opportunities for the students and also support because they had to, all the principals at the middle schools had to commit to entering at least one robotics competition this year. So we are, this is, we're super excited about this. But the, I can't say who from yet because that's got, we're going to get all the plans in place and then roll it out. But it is very, it was so exciting. I was like, "Can I please tell them?" So yes, so that's great news for us.
It is.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Rower.
And the last, while he's clear, while he's going to... The last two is H and I, it has another C and D at the bottom. Okay. H and I. H and I.
Technology.
Yeah, I got the right spell. She's delta. How is it?
Oh, wow.
Where's display down there? You got display mode? Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Moore, distinguished board members that I enjoy working with. Please pardon me, I think I have a cold. I'm not sure we work so hard around here, Dr. Moore. We don't even know when we're sick. Let's talk about Montgomery. Someone mentioned to me the other day, "What is the state doing?" And I reflected back on the January of 2017 when this started, and the conversations were always about what's wrong with Montgomery? Board governance? Innovation? Working with people, partnerships, and finances. Connecting with young people, doing what young people like. And what I want to tell you is that what you saw today
Yes.
is all of those things in reverse. You saw a presentation with our operations department that is aggressively going out and seeking quotes and partnerships with people to save money. I think that's what you saw. You saw STEM innovation and students telling you how excited they are and how they're building confidence to go out and do things in the world. I think you saw that, too. You see money being cut and saved on every corner every time you turn a corner. I think the belief was that you were going to see these different groups and these different people coming in and dismantling Montgomery. That might have been the plan initially. That's not the plan now. Part of the staff that we cut at the central office were people that we were bringing in as additional support. We built capacity in the people in Montgomery to do the work. And we're still holding to that. We're less than 5%, which is the anticipated cost of central office staff. We're below 5%. We're closer to 3%. But we're still building capacity. Hit the next slide for me, please, sir. What is capacity? You figure it out what it means to you and yourself, okay? But what I'm telling you it means for us is we're putting things together and people are producing now. What you're seeing on a regular basis is staff members that serve at the executive level or as support, which I think people think, Dr. Moore, she is phenomenal. I will tell you, she's phenomenal. She is phenomenal. But she does not do all of this. She has hired a staff and empowered a team of people that go out and do the work that you're seeing now. What you haven't put together piece by piece is the fact that every month, a staff member comes up and presents a portion of the strategic plan. They present a portion of Advanced Ed, which is now Cognia. They present a portion of what the instructional plan is. A staff member presented STEM today. That's what you're seeing. You're seeing capacity develop and thrive in Montgomery Public Schools. So to build capacity, you're seeing that now. Next one, please, sir. This whole thing is a work in progress. We're one of the only school districts in the state of Alabama that people expect to function 100% properly 100% of the time. That's the only school district that I know of that's under that standard. There are ups and downs. People quit, people move, people leave. We're underfunded. You know, things catch on fire. There are a lot of things that's going on, but what you're seeing is a group of people that have built capacity and leaders that are stepping up, and you're seeing things improve, and it's a work in progress. Next slide, please, sir. What is Cognia Advanced Ed, it's the gold standard? Madam Chair, had someone say, "All you guys ever talk about is Advanced Ed. If it's the gold standard internationally, why would we talk about anything else? If this is what you're supposed to go by the pattern in your schools, why would we talk about anything else? If this is what we were using to dissect and disassemble MPS, why would we talk about anything else? We're talking about what you were talking about. That's the standard by which we were being measured." Next slide, please, sir. Cognia. You know what Cognia is doing? Cognia is in schools all over the place. 36,000 institutions, 5 million schools, 25 million teachers. One more slide, please, sir. 85 different countries, elevating teaching and learning in over 400 years. That's the gold standard. What you see every time people come up here is how they are closing out those 31 standards from Advanced Ed. You see where we started? You guys all saw that. It was May 31st, 2018. It was the worst Advanced Ed review in the history of Advanced Ed. You saw that. You see where we are now? It's already been presented to you. The staff presented it in the fall. Next slide. What's our status? Don't believe me? Look it up yourself. People want to make decisions about what's going on in Montgomery every day about the status of Montgomery schools. You see the name of the school district? You see where we are? You see who the leader is? And are we accredited? You're still accredited. Still accredited. Still going strong. Next slide. Here are the things that are remaining, standard 1.5. Board governance. I think you saw today an outstanding example of board communication, discourse, conversation, and governance. Why are you seeing that? Because this is a focus that they've been working on the entire time. Board trainings, board retreats, winter conferences, special trainings in-house on communication and how we got to be mindful of the things we say and what we're doing. Retreats that are put together and designed by the leadership, the superintendent, based on the book studies that they're doing, and the board. These are the things that they've been doing. There's evidence of board governance improving and doing well. You've seen it. Let that be your marker. Next one, please, sir. Leaders engaging stakeholders, implementing communication plans. We overly communicate with our folks. But if you're not getting the communication that you're looking for, you may feel like you're not being communicated with, right? If there's something that we can do to support you better in our communication, reach out to that person in that department, and we will help you with that. Next slide, please, sir. Here's some of the things that we've done. I want to read a few of those to you. 100 notes sent home to the media and community leaders. This is just since August. Media stories, 248 stories reported on in media. 91% were either positive or neutral. You can see this? Specific social media since August. Facebook. How many is that? 10,000. 500 posts. Each post reached an average of 2,200 people. Twitter, 2,000 followers. 300 tweets. You can see that. Next slide, please, sir. YouTube, right? This has been video now. That video that you saw with Kristi, that's produced in-house with us. We're creating content that we're sharing, telling our story. Parent notifications, look at that. 600,000 notifications. The superintendent, she has an advisory council, she has meetings that she does with the community, she does symposiums, she does sit-ins, she does tours, she visits churches, she does a monthly parent, magazine article. Next one. There's more than enough opportunities to find areas of communication about what's going on. Kristi shared something just a bit ago about what's going on with STEM. We're constantly communicating and pushing out information about how MPS is moving forward. Let's look at fostering a culture of student-centered learning. Did you see that in STEM? We ask the students what they like. We ask the students how is it important to them and how is it helping them and how is it changing them and how are they benefiting? You heard from the students. I was shy, but now I can present, right? So you see that the decisions that we're making structurally focus on the needs of the students. Next slide, please, sir. This, all of our Elliot observations and walkthroughs. We have another round of walkthroughs coming up. We've done over 600 Elliot's this fall. We have a review of Advanced Ed slash Cognia. We're going to use both, as you guys are familiar, coming up in two weeks. At some point, we got to start inputting the data, okay? Next slide, please, sir. We got another big one coming up this spring after Cognia's gone. Professional development. In the summer, you had over 81 hours. Where did those hours come from? They came from the Advanced Ed Elliot walkthroughs. They came from what principals and teachers thought were the needs. They came from what the students were asking for. Technology-based. August, the back-to-school kickoff, over 141 hours of diverse and varied instructional opportunities for PD. January, when we came back to the new school year, go back, there you go, 170 hours of PD opportunities for our folks. It's data-driven, it's professional development. Development is geared towards the needs of the teachers and the responses from the students. Next slide. What are the innovative things that we're doing? All of this are things that are remnants from the Advanced Ed/Cognia review. All of this, all of this left over from the review. We're talking about from the very first one in March of 18, all the way to now. We're still working on that while we're gearing up for a new review. All of these things. I put five, I made a mistake, I misinterpreted what they said. There were six. There are five that are still working. Does one go with the review pretty soon? That's outstanding. These are the things that we're doing to support the needs of young people in the district. Next slide, please. The system implements a process to ensure the curriculum is clearly aligned. Next slide, sir. How we engage the folks? How we engage them? The curriculum department. Well, what we do is we have a leadership meeting that goes every week. We figure out the initiatives and the things that we're starting. We push them down. They break out by departments. Departments meet together, they break that out, they put it out into the school. That's every week. We also have, next slide, please. We also have our leadership council that we do every month, but then we went back for our principal meetings and we started targeting specifically towards the needs of elementary, middle, and high, so we do three individual breakouts by grade level, by topic, by school division. So that those people that are connected to those things can have the information specific to them to help them do their job. That's a lot of meetings. But we're going to inconvenience ourselves so that we can convenience our people who work with our young people. Next slide, please, sir. What kind of questions do you guys have for me, Madam Chair? MPS is moving forward.
Yes, we are.
That's the state of my intervention. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Williamson, we have some health.
Okay, financial, Watts first.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Watts, I'm sorry. Mr. Watts.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. I should have before you the financial statement for the month of November 2019. As you know, November represents the second month of the fiscal year. Of course, our fiscal year begins October 1st. Of course, November would represent 16.67% of the fiscal year. So we divided two divided by 12, that'll be 16.67%. When we look at our total expenditures, Madam President, our expenditures are running about 16%. So our expenditures are running a little bit less than what the projected amount is, which is really good. The financial statement also should contain, first, explanation of financial data and snapshot analysis, which provides a brief overview of the district's financial position. So it states what our fund balance is now compared to last year, what our revenues and expenditures are now. Also, monthly budget percentage, which is what I just spoke about, this is the second month of the fiscal year, which represents 16.67% of the fiscal year. There's a monthly comparative statement in there, compares our budget to actual on a monthly basis and our budget to actual on an annual basis. A statement of cash flow lists our total amount of revenues, whether those be state revenues, federal revenues... revenues, federal revenues, or local revenues, and also lists a total amount of expenditures. Then there are pie charts that list the percentages of cash inflows and percentages of cash outflows, and then the F reports, which includes the combined balance sheet, which pretty much states the district's financial position, the assets, liabilities, and equity. Of course, we end the fiscal year, we ended the month of November with about an eighteen million dollar fund balance. As you know, we're projected to end fiscal year twenty twenty with about a twenty million dollar fund balance. Of course, we also know that we receive the majority of our local revenues during the months of November through February. Of course, because of time and differences, we'll start seeing a pickup in our local revenues beginning next month, beginning the month of December. So December and January, we'll see a pretty, pretty healthy fund balance. But let's keep in mind that those monies are already budgeted for the remaining months. But again, with that, we are still projecting an end fund balance of about twenty million dollars, which is beyond the state-required one-month fund balance. Madam President.
That's awesome. Any questions for Mr. Watts?
He explained it all. I tried to go along with it.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
That was a very good report today. Now, Dr. Williamson.
We have some fun with the fund balance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the first contract that I'll be discussing will be the contract with Health Services, Inc. We have entered into partnership with Health Services, Inc. over the past school year in order for them to offer medical services in four of our schools. Over this past school year, at the beginning of the semester, we have in the past, we acquired psychiatric services from River Region. Over the past semester, we have lost access to those services because that physician left private practice. So because we were already in partnership with Health Services, Inc., we reached out to them to find out how they could partner with us so that we could continue those services that we've been providing to families in our district. So they were more than willing to step up and partner with us for that at no cost to the district. So as soon as we have this contract signed, then we will be able to refer families to Health Services, Inc. so that they can continue those psychiatric services, medical maintenance, as well as counseling services that children may need. Any questions about how we will work with Health Services, Inc.? And we have our Health Services, Inc. partners here.
I don't think we have any questions. I think we're saying yea.
Yay. Thank you so much.
All right. The final contract that you have is the one from Helping Montgomery Families Initiative. This is a contract that we also have been continuing for a number of years. We've been in partnership with them. This support is being changed somewhat this year so that they are able to expand their reach. We had certain pockets of children that were not able to be referred to Helping Montgomery Families because of specific categories that they fell within. Under the new leadership, Mr. Anderson, but unfortunately, I think he had to leave, they have been able to take some of those limits off. So we are able to refer more children regardless of their special ed capacity or special ed category and regardless of their age, because in the past, school, remember that compulsory age attendance ends at seventeen. But we do have children in our district that go beyond seventeen, and in the past, we were not able to refer those children because they were outside of the reach of the law. But they have worked with us for this school year to, if a child is enrolled in MPS, then they are automatically eligible for any of the supports through Helping Montgomery Any questions about that support?
Okay. How many, I'm sorry. How many students comes through HMFI? And these may be questions, I was hoping Mr. Anderson would still be here, that you may not know that he could answer.
I actually do know because we keep our own data.
Okay.
So I did have them pull our data from this first semester of the school year. So to date, we have referred three hundred and one children because of any type of discipline need. So as you read through that contract, you see that whenever a child has multiple discipline events or an egregious discipline event, outside of the support that we receive, that we provide through the district, we also make an automatic referral to HMFI so that we can get those supports connected as well. So through that, they have already met sixty-one of the students that we have referred to them, and that's an ongoing process because they typically meet weekly, but because of our timeout over the holidays and their timeout right now because of some needed training that they needed to provide in their office, we're at a little bit of a lag. But I anticipate that that will quickly recoup once they pick up their meetings again at the twenty-ninth of this month.
Okay. And I know, reading through this, that MPS supports the HMFI program with a hundred thousand dollars.
That is correct.
So specifically, what does the HMFI, and I know it's a program under the District Attorney's Office, so what specifically do they provide MPS for that hundred thousand dollars?
So that hundred thousand dollars is specific for the two counselors that they hire to handle the caseload. So those counselors are the ones who go into the home. They reach out to those families. They conduct those assessments. They write the reports for those families. And then when we have the weekly meetings with HMFI, those MDT meetings, they are at that table to share progress reports on how families are doing over time, as well as they make visits in the school to follow up with children.
And they're able, with just two counselors, to have intervention with three hundred and one children? I mean, do you think, Dr. Williamson, I mean, in your opinion?
I think that they maximize those dollars as much as they can over time because of funding in our district. We have had to cut back on that number, and so they have also cut back on the number of counselors that they have.
I'd like to, and you have written a letter or somewhere, I'd say something, I have some of the same concerns that you have, because a hundred thousand dollars is quite a bit of money. And what you just said, it's a second ago, it kind of sent a red flag, a small red flag to me, when you said that when we have students that have multiple discipline problems. We just did a hearing last week, and anytime we've done a hearing, I don't see where they went to HMFI. You see what I'm saying? And that's where I'm like, I think Ms. Bailey asked, "Could we not get some kind of monthly report for some kind of accountability?" You know, to know what, how many students per month, per week? And I question the fact, you know, three hundred and one students, like I said, and just two counselors. I'm just wondering, are we getting, I've seen Mr. Bailey out plenty of times, come out and speak on bullying. They've got the anti-bullying campaign, love it, you know, but, you know, I still question the hundred thousand dollars, and are we getting our bang for our buck?
So again, they use that hundred thousand dollars for the counselors who are doing the assessments through their model. Has it worked for us? Yes, it has worked for us. And back to your question about any student that is expelled, anytime a due process hearing packet is made for any child in this district, referral to HMFI is a requirement for that child. So if we don't proceed with that child leaving the district, that child goes on the table just like any other child, so that we can be sure that we're accessing all of the resources that we can to ensure that that child has success.
If you're talking about students with multiple problems, you know, that's not the traditional student that you have in your class. And back in the olden days, they used to count the special needs students for more than what they counted one student for. So you have a lot of issues that come along with multidisciplined children. So the three hundred could be like, really, four hundred or so.
Because they have multiple kinds.
Yeah.
Well, and also, that hundred thousand dollars, if you think about two counselors, by the time you figure in salaries and benefits, that eats up a hundred thousand pretty quickly for someone who's a trained counselor, I would think.
Because remember, when we were doing the GRIF program, you were saying, "Well, we're not paying our teachers fifty thousand dollars." But Dr. Moore explained to you that it took in the benefits and all of that.
And I'm sorry, and may I also add that they're not just addressing the student that we refer within the district. When they go into that home, they are working with that entire family. And if there are any siblings in MPS, they're also working with those siblings as well. So it's a whole family model, actually.
Right.
Dr. Williamson, does the family model show up in your numbers? Is that additional referral, or is that not, is that calculating in that three hundred number?
The three hundred number is going to be our true students that we have referred, yes.
Or it's actually more?
More than.
Most of these partnerships, when they serve a student, and their other siblings of school age, they serve them too, but it's just not in the number. We can look at that.
And if I, I just want to add too. I remember meeting with Helping Family Initiative when I first got on the board, and although they are, you know, we may pay them, but they partner with other agencies to also fill in the gaps for some of the needs that they just simply may not have enough people for or maybe even above them. So there's literally a partnership that they've cultivated within their organization.
Right. And they have a multidisciplinary team, I think that's what you're referring to. I just, you know, with two counselors, and I'm, you know, I support this program, obviously, you know, we're part of their team, but I don't want children to fall through the cracks that really need the services. And we can say that we are referring, and this is their program, I'm not at all throwing daggers at you. I hope you and I are on the same page. But when we are paying them and, you know, it's three hundred and one children, there's no way that two people can go into three hundred households and address that. And so my concern is, and that's something, you know, obviously to talk to their program about, is I know they get additional funding from other sources, and so, you know, to me, that's where we need to put more money, and we need to put more funding in because I do know that there are children that are falling through the cracks because there's absolutely no way.
In case in point, I'm not, you know, I'm not using names, but I'm all for this program. But when you say it goes into the family, you know, we've all sat up here recently, and it wasn't necessarily the child that was the problem, it was the family. And we're always wondering, what is, what, we deal with babies, but when they get to, you know, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, and you have parents raising them, where the parent is typically the problem, and we all agreed with that, I want to know that HMFI has stepped in, and what did they do to fix that problem? Because, you know, it hadn't been up to me. I pulled that child out of that family. You know, and I'm just, I mean, we have those issues.
And so that MDT team has members from Montgomery Area Mental Health. It has members from DHR, members from the adjudicated system, members from MPD. There are so many partners that are Gift of Life is at the table, Child Protector is at the table. There are so many partners who are at the table that by the time a child is being referred, it is because we've almost exhausted everything that we could possibly do within the district. And so we're using the strength and numbers around that table to craft something to support families and children with that success.
And I'd like to add this also. I know you all probably think she's always trying to quote the law, and I'm not an attorney, and I know that, but part of what has happened is that many years ago, the state of Alabama came up with a law that said that if children were misbehaving at school and had so many suspensions, or if they were having attendance problems, that under the law, you would report these children to legal authorities, and the parents would be responsible for bringing that student in line. And so offices like the DA's office were understaffed and undermanned and did not have the finances to go along with trying to keep up with all of those folks. And so a lot of mamas and daddies, more mamas from what I could see, ended up going, sometimes paying a fine, going to jail for the weekend. So all of those things were happening. And so in many cases, as we're talking about here, those offices, the DA's offices and others decided to join together with other groups to try to intercede somewhat with the parents. And so you don't get them all, sometimes, you know, because of the funding. The DA, I was on a committee with him last, this week, talking to the Public Safety Committee. And so even though I was in education, I was there with the Chief of Police and the DA's office, and we all talked about the fact that the resources that we need are not there for any of these agencies. And so, yes, admittedly, we have issues that we sometimes just cannot fix under the current status of the resources, but joining together, hopefully, we can do something to intercede a little bit with some of the students. And then sometimes, it'll just be out of our hands if we have parents that we just can't get to comply. And then, of course, under our rules, behavior-wise at a school, then a student at some point will have some consequence for their behavior. But then we also then, at that point, try to get them into another agency that will help deal with them and that they're not out on the street, even if they are expelled. They're not on the street. They have some other things. That's how all of that started, under a law that is not funded, but school systems, DA's offices, and others. Now, we will do a better job of trying to get a report for you that shows how many students from MPS were under this umbrella during a certain period of time. We can do that.
We can have a weekly report. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we are going to adjourn and then re-adjourn, so adjourned, adjourned.
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
Don't leave if you, because we're going to go into our special for just a minute. It won't take long, so.
It means the same thing.
So don't leave. Okay.
Can we?
So now you're going to open this.
Do we need a five-minute break? All right, we're going to have a five-minute break, and we will reconvene.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Dr. Moore?
Okay, thank you. We have for your consideration several items for approval. Since it's not listed as a consent agenda, I'll go through each one. I recommend approval of the Life Academy Charter School application.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept, I move, I'm sorry, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Life Academy Charter School application.
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by a show of hands. All opposed? Okay. That was five yays and two nays. Motion passes. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the Health Services, Inc. memorandum of understanding.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Health Services, Inc. memorandum of understanding. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by a show of hands. It's unanimous. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the Helping Montgomery Families Initiative HMFI memorandum of agreement.
I would like to move to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve HMFI memorandum of agreement.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor with a show of hands, please. Unanimous. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the purchase-sell agreement for right-of-way at Capitol Heights Middle School.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the superintendent's agreement to purchase the sale for the right-of-way at Capitol Heights Middle School.
I second.
Discussion.
Okay. All. All in favor, signify by a show of hands, and that is unanimous.
Okay. So I want to add one last thing about the Life Academy Charter School application. From this point, we have sixty days to come up with a contract. So what you have done tonight is to approve the application. That's one part of the process. The next part will be the contract that has to be drafted and negotiated between the board and Life Academy, and then that will be brought back to you for your approval.
Okay. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, at, right here. So we are adjourned.